Good evening, everyone. And welcome to this special organizational meeting of the Oregon Village Board. It's Tuesday, April 17, 2018, at 5:00 p.m. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And before a roll call, I would like to congratulate Jerry Bollig and Jeff Boudreaux on their recent success in the election and being reelected, and also welcome to Amanda Peterson to the board and your election. And does anyone want the oath of office administered? Okay. That's how that usually goes.
Nobody here.
There will be a roll call.
Yeah.
Grenier. Staten.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Boudreaux.
Here.
Jacobson.
Here.
Bollig. Carpenter.
Here.
Okay, that takes us to item six, which is confirmation of appointments. And item A, announcement of village president's appointments as follows. Finance, buildings and facilities. Jerry Bollig will chair with Jenna Jacobson and Amanda Peterson. Personnel and public safety, Jeanne Carpenter will chair with Jeff Boudreaux and Jenna Jacobson. Public works utilities, Jeff Boudreaux will chair with Jerry Bollig and Amanda Peterson.
Buckle your seatbelt, Jeff.
Aye.
And planning commission, Jeanne Carpenter is village board rep. Library board, Jeanne Carpenter will be village board rep through 2020. Community development authority, those appointments are tabled at this time. Historic preservation, Jerry Bollig will be the rep through 2020. Park board, Amanda Peterson will be the rep from the village board. Zoning board of appeals, Jerry Bollig will be the rep. And cable TV committee, Jeff Boudreaux will be the rep. And also make an appointment to the police board of commission with board approval or without board approval, I'm sorry, managed there for a five-year term. So those are all the appointments and so on of this body. I'd like, now like to open the floor for nominations for vice president.
Man, you're back.
I'll nominate Jerry.
Second.
Thank you. Any further nominations? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thanks, Jeff.
You're welcome, Jerry. You do a, you do a good job.
Congratulations. You get to sit right up front again.
And you're probably gonna be going more now.
Well, you're right.
You definitely give Steve a high bar.
Yeah.
So, so when I first became village president, we didn't have the iPads.
We didn't have cars either.
Uh-oh.
So you want to... Yeah, I'm gonna redo some of those appointments.
Is it too late to back out of this?
We had the paper packet and I'd get something done and I'd, I'd put it on the floor down here so it got out of the way. Jerry, pick it back up and put it back up on top. Slow things down, but...
He's come a long way.
He has. Yeah, we're getting there.
Yeah, I'm like a good dog. I get the train.
So item C is my recommended appointments for committees, commissions and boards that require board approval. These appointments, the motion would be to approve all of these. Item C one through C 14 excluding C two and C three. So I will read all of these and then look for a motion. Reappointment to planning committee, three-year term, Scott Meyer. One-year term, Eric Smithback as an alternate and McKay Labino as a student member. Three-year term to library board, Brian Buster and Kyle Severson. And we have one vacant position there and possibly another one coming up with a person who'll be out of the country for a year. Board action on the community development authority is tabled. Board action on historic preservation commission, three-year term. Jan Bonseville, Uriah Carpenter and Randy Glisch. And a one-year term, Abby Lees as an alternate member. And a student member, Tony Folkler. An ad hoc member, Safe Belt Incorporated. Park board, one-year term can close, alternate Eva Scythe, student member and a vacant alternate student member. Zoning board of appeals, two-year term, alternate John Beano first, Janet Murray second, and there's a vacant one there. Board review, one-year terms, Jerry Bollig, village board member, Jenna Jacobson, village board member, Darlene Grenier, village board member. Jeanne Carpenter, village board member and Peggy Hague, village clerk. Cable TV committee, one-year term, Andy Wyland for the school, Kermit Traska, Uriah Carpenter, Tom Kershtorfer, Judy Knutson, chamber rep. And Pauls Wicker Program Coordinator, Elise Smithback and Michael Houtzinger. Fire EMS district commission, one-year term, Darlene Grenier and Jeff Boudreaux from the village board. Reappointments to Fire EMS joint board, one-year term, Mark Severson and Pamela Hines. Oregon council on aging, one-year term, Darlene Grenier. Reappointment to village school district cooperation committee, one-year term, Darlene Grenier, village board rep and Mike Grace, village administrator. Reappointment to O.K.L. advisory committee and O.K.L. master plan committee, one-year term, Brian Yule. And then item 14, board action, one-year reappointments requiring board approval. Village attorney, Matt Dregney and Richard Eady from Stafford Rosenbaum. Prosecution attorney, Tim Spear-Schneider. Cemetery superintendent and sexton, Jeff Rao. Forest and weed commissioner, Jeff Rao. Building inspector, Tony Folkler, Safe Belt Incorporated. Zoning administrator, Tony Folkler, Safe Belt Incorporated and zoning administrator, alternate Jeff Rao. So we need a motion for those, please.
Some move.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
And Steve, the motion actually should just be one through 14. There's like, there's an error on the agenda, so it's just one through 14.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Then we go to designation of official newspaper, legal posting areas and financial institution depositories. Item eight, board action approving Oregon Observer as a village's official newspaper. Need a motion, please?
Some move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, board action designating legal posting areas as village hall, library and post office.
Some move.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 10, board action adopting resolution number 1807, designation of financial institutions, depositories and authorized accounts signers.
Some moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Amanda's first motion.
You got your name in the minute.
Got that out of the way.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 11, discussion possible action, identity theft prevention program for 2018. So who tells us about this? We all have to sign, right?
You ask that every, every year, Steve.
I know, 'cause I can't remember from here to here.
I know, I'm not...
Does anybody else remember from here to here?
No.
Okay, I don't...
It's, it's, it's an audit requirement.
Okay.
For, it, it's saying that we, we have to take precaution in protecting people's private information.
Okay. And there's a signature page?
Yeah, I'm just starting signing it.
Yeah, everybody's, all the board members have to sign it.
Yep, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
So we need, we need a motion on that, yeah, right?
Yep.
Some move. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any questions besides mine? Now we all know what it is. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That takes us to item 12. I'll read the first part, Jeanne, I turned it over to you. Well, go ahead. Why don't you just go ahead and take that?
Oh, can we start?
It's really long, so you can read it.
All right, sure. So for board members' materials previously emailed to you for this discussion, it's also posted on the village's webpage for anyone watching. This is from our February 26th Personnel, Public Safety and Protection Committee meeting. We had a very lengthy discussion regarding compliance concerns of licensed alcohol beverage establishments with municipal judge Beth Cox, police chief Brian Yule, village attorney Matt Dregney. And we may take possible board action tonight. So should I make this motion to get this on the table for discussion? Okay. So this is my very long motion. And this motion, just so everyone knows, sums up what the committee decided at the committee level back in February. So I'll make this motion to get it up on the table for discussion. So I would move that we make the following changes to the Village of Oregon's application for an operator's license to serve fermented malt beverages and intoxicating liquor. Applicants must provide their violation or conviction history for the past 10 years. Currently applicants must provide all violations with no date limit. Clarify the following language, quote, applicants may be denied for falsification, quote, to. Quote, applicants will be denied for failure to intentional or unintentional disclose accurate and complete violation or conviction history. And will not be able to reapply for another operator's license for a six-month period. And if the police department finds other issues that may conflict with the applicant's abilities to perform their job, instead of the police department making a recommendation for approval or denial, the chief of police presents findings with background history to the board in a cover memo and will provide a recommendation if requested by the village board. So that's my motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
So we have lots of attachments in our packet. Is Judge Cox gonna be here tonight, do we know?
No, she is not.
Oh, okay. So I don't know if you've all had a chance to review it. This stemmed from, we've had several businesses that have had repeat violations of serving underage folks. And which I don't, I mean, that's, it's not a good thing, but when the problem really arose is when many of those businesses appeared before Judge Cox in court. Because Judge Cox, this is a mandatory court appearance if you get, if your business gets fined for serving underage person, you have to go before the court. And she explained to us that the business owners were kind of flip, flippant about it. And viewed it as a cost of doing business, did not show any remorse. And this was very troubling to her, and so she thought perhaps we might need to change not only the, that course of action, but also how we license bartenders and operators licenses in the village. Because perhaps the, the problem is starting there where we're not, where perhaps we are issuing operator licenses to folks who aren't capable of making good decisions. So that's a really long explanation, but that's how this all came about. And she was particularly unhappy with, with us for, for approving a bartender license for a woman who had several traffic violations. And she didn't think that we should have done that. So over the course of 90 minutes, we came up with some compromises, which I think many of these are fair. Right now, if you are applying for a bartender license, you have to list every conviction, every parking ticket, everything you've ever done in your entire life. And if you're old like me, I've gotten a lot of parking tickets. So I remember when I applied to be agent, the alcohol agent for the Firefly, Chief Yule probably remember this, I just put several parking tickets in City of Madison, like since birth. Because I just did not want to be thought that I was being, not disclosing it. And so we thought perhaps instead of doing that, we do it for the past 10 years. Because even if you've been convicted of, of charges involving alcohol or drugs and, but 10 years has passed, we thought as a committee, everyone deserves a second chance. Those convictions should not follow you your entire life. Everyone deserves to be able to work. And so that's the reason for the 10 years. And then we, we changed the language about being denied for falsification to being denied, but then you can reapply in a six-month period. And then Chief Yule, because we didn't agree on everything, a compromise was that if someone comes forward applying for a bartender license that he maybe doesn't think, he's not 100% comfortable recommending them, he will present their background to us with no recommendations so that we can make our own decision. So those are some compromises, decisions we came to in a very lengthy discussion.
Yeah, and it's really ultimately up to you guys anyway to decide whether you're gonna approve or not approve. So my recommendation shouldn't really bear a whole lot of weight. I should just be able to present you with the facts and that's what I'll do in a cover memo. And then you guys can decide exactly how you want to proceed with it.
Yeah, I wasn't at that meeting, but it seems like a good course of action to me. I think clarifies the process we had where we approved the one license to serve was, was not an easy discussion for us to have. And it was approved contrary to what the police recommend, and I think this clarifies that quite a bit and just makes it more clear, more clear cut.
So I, I do have to take a little bit of exception with the way that that happened. We, we are the village trustees and our job is to interpret the things that come before us that are not a matter of municipal ordinance. There's a whole separate process for making things a matter of municipal ordinance. So to have a judge chastise me in an email for my use of judgment, I think was completely inappropriate and I didn't appreciate it. And I wish that Judge Cox was here so I could share that with her. I don't go into her courtroom. I have a funny thought in my head, but I'm not gonna share that one. I don't go into her courtroom and adjudicate her cases, and I don't send her emails when I don't think she adjudicates them the right way. And I don't appreciate, appreciate her coming in to my room and second guessing my judgment. That's what I'm here for.
Okay. I think it's good that you, you brought that part.
Yeah, and I think this makes it a lot easier for both of us to do our jobs and not be at odds. You know, I can simply present the findings that we have and then you guys can make that final determination so we don't have those conflicts.
You know, and I think we still have a problem in front of us, right? I, I don't think you can punish people, obviously it's clear to me, you cannot punish people into submission. This feels good, but this isn't gonna fix the problem. And I think we need to, if we really want to have a good conversation about how we're gonna fix the problem, we need to get our nose out of the books and, and get our, get it in the streets. And I had mentioned the possibility of maybe, you know, getting the individuals who own establishments that have liquor licenses together as a group and let them figure it out. Have them bring us a solution collectively as to what they think they could try to do to, to change this pervasive problem in the community. Because it's not one individual server and it's not one establishment.
But there are some establishments that seem to appear on a fairly regular basis.
But you know...
If one has three violations out of three tries in 12 months, that's pretty bad.
But we're very limited in terms of what we can do about that. And we've talked, Matt's talked about that for me, I think, fairly, fairly extensively. You know, at a certain point, we can say, "Don't do it." And then if they say, "Well, then what?" Well, I'm gonna tell you, "Don't do it again." And then what? You know, I, I don't think we're getting to the root of the problem, which is that, well, I'm not gonna speculate what it is, but I really would love to hear what the owners of these establishments think the root of the problem is. And I'd, I'd love to engage them in dialogue to, to figure this out together.
Yeah, and we have invited the violators to board meetings to talk with them, and so I'm repeating it again.
Well, not just violators. I would, I think it's bigger than that. I think it's every single person that owns an establishment that sells alcohol. If they think that they are, if they think that this is something that will never happen to them, I'd like to hear why. Because maybe they've got some best practices in place that other people haven't thought of. And if they think that it, it's never gonna happen to them and they don't know why, I think they should think again. Because it's not them serving that's the problem. It's the person that they hire when they have a position open that makes a poor judgment call. That's the problem. So something, there's something in there, and I can't put my arms around it because I've never, I've never owned an alcohol-serving establishment, but there's something in there. And there's gotta be somebody, it's not that one person in the community's got the silver bullet. I think everybody's got a piece of the knowledge and if they came together and shared that, that we could at least start trying different things.
Well, and I've, you know, I've provided them with, you know, a police liaison to kind of help them with our processes and to provide them with information that we can, you know, use and they can use to help them, you know, maybe better their policies or their training or whatever it might be. So, you know, we're trying to do what we can on our end because we don't want to see people fail either. We want to make sure that they're, they're doing their compliance and, and they do their due diligence when they're, when they're IDing people. I, I think you heard Chef Dave come in here and say that they're just too busy. Well, we can't have that. Can't just be too busy. So, you know, yeah, I don't know that we can solve this here and now, but I think that we can help them to make sure that when we do these compliance checks that the majority of them are in compliance.
And maybe that's a Judy thing at the chamber level, getting her businesses together. I don't know. I, I agree with you. I don't think it's something that we can solve here. And I don't know that pulling them in front of the camera's gonna really open them up. I almost think it's a, it's gotta be them getting together on their own in, in, in an environment that's safe where they can share the truth of things. You know, and not be afraid to be honest with one another about the reality.
And there, there are several municipalities that, you know, they've gotten together and they've, they've formed these sort of ad hoc committees that include the business owners, obviously. And then they come up with a system like a demerit point system like I've introduced a while ago that says, "Okay, if this happens, we understand and we've approved this that so many points, you know, we're gonna get suspended, our licenses are gonna suspend," whatever it might be. But we are part of that process and we understand that's gonna happen. So, you know, if that's something that the board wants to, to look at, you certainly can. Or you can continue on doing what you're doing now and, and make decisions independently.
And, I mean, kind of to that point, I think part of the issue is with our, the policy as it is written now, we're coming in at the back end, not in the middle of it, right? So we keep getting these notifications that they're, these businesses are failing their underage, the compliance checks. But we don't really have a, a way to deal, step in and say, "Okay, how can we help you succeed until, you know, you have three, four, five?" And then it's like, "Okay, do we suspend you?" Which we don't want to do, or do we just let it continue? So I, I think we do need to look at our, our policy and see how can we make changes so that we can intervene and be a partner in success to prevent it from going forward when the problem starts, rather than just keep seeing the numbers tick up and, and not doing, not being able to do much about it.
And we get to set the consequence. I mean, you know, by the time it gets so bad, it's either you suspend the license like forever or you don't. I mean, those are sort of the options we have. Whereas if we intervene partway, when we see a trend, there's a problem, we could say, you know, sit down with them, enter into a voluntary agreement with them, working together as partners to, and, and determine a consequence that will happen if they violate it after the voluntary agreement. We could say, you know, we're, if it happens again in the next six months, we're gonna suspend your license for a weekend. You know, we, we can set whatever terms we want.
Well, to an extent, I, I think Judge sent that out emails too, so...
Let Matt clarify the suspension because it's gotta be way more than two days.
It's like 10 days, isn't it?
Unfortunately, it has to be 10 days.
So I have, yeah. Just say a few things. So we don't cite the holder of the Class B license when somebody, when an underage person is served. And we're not allowed to cite that person. And from their perspective, they're not the ones who are at, who are committing the violation. For the, the, the people who own these places, I think what they would say is, "Look, I, I have an employee who made a mistake. They're the ones who are, you know, cited and they're the ones who show up in the courtroom and, and pay the forfeiture." And so, and legally, that's the way the, the statutes have been kind of modified over time. We don't have the authority to cite the license holder anymore. We used to. We can only cite the server. And in some of those cases, my guess is the server we're citing is not someone who holds any kind of license. You can have unlicensed people serving alcohol. You have to have one person on premises who has an operator's license, but... So these are, these are businesses who hire folks who, you know, sometimes make mistakes. And then they end up getting cited and those are the people. So one of the things that was confusing to me, and I think we have to be careful about language. We're talking about, you know, these establishments as, and saying, "They got cited. They failed their check." I think they would disagree with that language. They would say, "I didn't fail and I didn't get cited. I had an employee who's, who messed up and they were cited." And I'm not sure about this discussion of people in the courtroom treating this as, you know, a cost of doing business. Because to, I don't know, I'm not sure what happened there. But, you know, most of the folks who serve food and drinks are not, you know, highly paid people and these forfeitures are not small. I mean, I think, I don't know what the total forfeit.
$376.
That's with cost?
Well, that's just the bond amount.
That's the bond amount, okay. So $376 for someone who's making what people make serving drinks and food, it's a lot of money. So I think it's a stiff, for the server, it's already a stiff penalty. So then the discussion is, well, what, what can we do about the, the business owner and them? And we have a real limited options there, I think, and partly because of the way the law is written. You know, we can't cite them directly and even suspending their license can be problematic on the basis of these violations. If that's something we want to explore, we can explore it. But it's unusual, if not unheard of, I don't know of an example of a, of a place that's, you know, a restaurant or a bar that where a community has chosen to suspend or revoke their license based on, you know, a, a handful of instances in which an employee served an underage person inappropriately. License suspension and revocation proceedings are typically things that happen when you have much more significant problems occurring at a place. At least, that's been my experience.
Like, like what? Like fights or what?
The only time I've ever seen suspension or revocation proceedings are when, yeah, you have a lot of police calls in response to significant problems. Fights, disorderly conduct, you know, where the, and the establishment itself is failed to take the necessary steps to address the concerns. Things like unlawful conduct taking place and they know about it and they're not calling the police. That will get you in big trouble in many communities and might lead to suspension or revocation. Pattern of disorderly conduct or fights or things of that nature. But, so this, the kind of problem we're dealing with here, I think is on a different level of magnitude. It doesn't, in my mind, and I've never really seen this kind of problem lead to suspension or revocation proceedings. And when we did have a conversation at the board level about, you know, is that the direction the board wanted to go? I don't think the board really wanted to go there. It's a pretty significant process and consequence to be talking about. So certainly we can continue to cite individuals who fail to follow the requirements and who improperly serve underage people. And for those people, it's a significant consequence. With respect to the business owners, what can we do there? I, I don't know that I have a great answer to that question, other than just to continue to encourage them to do better and to, I mean, unless you're, unless you really want to explore kind of turning up the heat from a legal standpoint. I don't have a great solution. I, I would say that's my impression, I know it's frustrating to see failures to kind of get through our compliance checks successfully, that that looks like, especially if it's multiple violations within a year, two or three in a year, that that looks really bad. But it's not really bad in the scheme of when, when we're talking about, is it, is it bad enough in, in communities in Wisconsin to lead to revocation or suspension proceedings? I haven't seen it, that. I've not seen that kind of violation lead to that kind of a consequence. So I think the village has, I mean, the process the board went through a few years ago really beefed up in a very substantial way your licensing process itself, where, you know, you're doing a lot more discussion and communication and educating and finding out about the place before you issue the license. I think that was a positive development in terms of maybe trying to get better results on this. But, and I, I guess my question for the chief would be, apart from this compliance check problem and serving underage people, do we have other problems that you're aware of, other violations that you would say, "This is concerning." This is meaningful, or is that kind of what we see?
Yeah, I mean, there are certain establishments, you know, I won't name names, that we have other issues at. Overserving, for example, or fights in the bar, that type of thing. So there are those types of things and we don't necessarily find out about those until after the fact either. So, you know, you're talking about not calling the police, sometimes that's an occurrence as well.
Yeah. And so most communities, when it comes to this issue, they're looking for, do we have an establishment where there's a, where there's a problem? Because we have a pattern of problematic public safety-related concerns. And if you have that, then that's, that can lead to this non-renewal or revocation discussion. And generally, it's the police department that knows the most about whether you've got that kind of a problem. On this other front, I think most communities are kind of in the same boat we're in, where we're citing people, we're doing the compliance checks. There is some shaming that goes on here. I mean, their names are in the paper. We talk about them at board meetings, so, I mean, it doesn't look great. So I think, I think my guess is that the business owners who find themselves in this position wish they hadn't and probably do try and do a little better. So I think it's a good idea to keep doing the compliance check. But aside from prosecuting them in municipal court and continuing to do the education and, you know, again, unless, if the board says, "No, we want to find a way to, to move to a higher level of enforcement with higher, with consequences for the light, for the class, for the business owner." I mean, if you say, if you, if you say, "That's a direction we want to explore," then we can explore that. But I think that's a very difficult step to take. You know, it's just not easy.
Thanks, Matt. So you said you haven't seen a license suspended for a period of time based on compliance check violations?
I have not. I've just never heard of that.
Yeah, and I think, no, there's probably more than one reason that it happens. One is a, a lot of municipalities don't do compliance checks. You know, so there's no track record there as to how they're doing.
Well, there's also a legal reason. I mean...
Because of difficulty in doing it.
Because of the way the statute's written.
But you can, right?
I'm not so sure. I mean, because the statute allows you to, under 12512, which, you know, these are the grounds for revoking a license. So number one, the person who holds the license has violated this chapter... So, number one, the person who holds the license has violated this chapter or a municipal regulation adopted under this chapter. That's the one we'd be talking about. Well, if we, if we said to the holder of a Class B license, we're seeking to suspend your license because you have violated this chapter, their first defense is going to be, I didn't violate anything. That was my employee. That's the kind of challenge we're faced with. We used to be able to cite the license holder.
Yeah.
We can't do that anymore. Now, the lobby that got that change in the law was very smart. They knew what they were doing, and they've now created this opportunity to defend against these claims by saying, well, that wasn't me. And that's their perspective. There's perspective. I think their perspective is, look, I'm doing the best I can, and it's not me, you know, just because one of my employees screws up doesn't mean I screwed up. And I think that's what we've heard, that's what we've heard from people. They say, we're doing the best we can, but sometimes our people screw up and that's not my fault. Now, the board could say, well, we think it is your fault and we're going to try and find some way to do more. I'm just saying that's a, I'm not exactly sure how to do that.
Yeah.
I wish I had a better answer, but I don't really have a better answer. We could really turn up the heat on these individuals who, I mean, I don't know, have we ever had an individual person who was cited, who was cited more than once in a 12-month period?
I.
Like, the same bartender or same server?
I couldn't, I couldn't tell you that off the top of my head.
Well, I mean, here's the way the law is written. If you're that server, you're potentially subject to going to prison if you have enough violations. So, I mean, the statute says, I'm not, and, and, and I'm not saying we would do this, but if you have two violations within 30 months, you're subject to $1,000 or imprisonment for not more than 90 days, or both. If you have three or more previous violations within 30 months, you're subject to a $10,000 fine and imprisonment for not more than nine months. Now, I've never heard of anyone going to prison for this, but that's what the statutes say, and the bar owners don't really care because they're not the ones going to prison. It's the poor server who ends up, now, and, and again, I've never heard of anyone being, that's what the statutes say, it's kind of ridiculous because I don't think anyone's ever doing that. And by the way, that wouldn't be something we would do in municipal court. We'd have to, good luck convincing the DA to do that.
We won't go there.
The DA is not going to do that. Yeah, so I mean, it's like.
It's interesting, though, that they put that language in the statute, but they didn't put anything, any mechanism to track that, you know what I mean? Because a lot of these, a lot of these operators have licenses and work in a lot of different bars, so how do you know?
Right, well, you'd have to have a system, like John Doe got, you know, you'd have to do it internal.
Right.
Where you're keeping track.
But again, you don't know what happens at another place of business if it's, if it's out of town, for example, you know what I mean?
Yeah, there is no, as far as I know, there's no established mechanism for doing that. And I'm also not really aware of any problem where anyone said, oh, we got like this problem of individual bartenders out there doing this all over the place.
Yeah, and I will say, I mean, some of the establishments here, that if, if their servers get cited, they fire them, so.
So, it's a tough problem. I would say, I think, in a way, we're kind of lucky that this is the problem we're talking about, because I have been in other communities where the problem is a different kind of problem that's much more significant. On this, in this arena, I'd say this is kind of the low-level problem that everybody deals with, and then it can get worse from there, so I'm glad it's not worse.
Thoughts?
I just have one thought, and it's probably in the form of a question for Chief Yule and for Matt, but you two get around to other communities or have access or network with officials in other communities. So, am I understanding that this is a problem that's common in all communities? Or is there other, other?
What problem are you talking about?
The serving, the serving underage. Yeah.
I think it happens everywhere.
Okay.
Not because there's any intention and plan to do it, but because people make mistakes, people are not as careful as they should be, you have a lot of servers who maybe are careless and don't take it as.
We can't really contact other communities that are doing, have different ways of dealing with this.
Well, I have, and that's one of the reasons why I brought the demerit point system before the board, because that's, that's one of the ways that some other communities are dealing with the problem. And, you know, there are, there are different ways to handle it, but that was one of those that I thought were, seemed to be the most effective, because not only does it give the board or the council guidance on what to do, but it's also agreed upon by the business owners and they understand the consequences. And it seems to, at least in the agencies that I've talked to, it seems to curb the problem before it ever got started a whole lot. So, you know, I don't know, I'm not saying that's the answer, I'm just saying that's some of the information that I've found from other communities.
Yeah, I've spoken to two business owners, one of which has installed a system, and I don't know how much it costs, that they scan the IDs in.
Yep.
And that seems to be very effective for them.
Yeah, those scanners, if I remember right from my previous employer, they can be anywhere from $600 to $1,500. But it does help with at least the fake IDs, because when you scan it, the information comes up, and we all know that you can get it, well, maybe we don't all know, but you can get a fake ID online for a hundred bucks nowadays, so. But that's not the issue with that, we're necessarily having here, because when we do compliance checks, the person that we use provides them with their real ID that says they're under 21.
Wish I had a solution.
So, just the Madison demerit, I'm looking at the Madison one, I think. So, it's got a list of violations and then point values associated with them. So, the one we're talking about, I think it must be traffic to underage person, I assume that's what they mean by selling to an underage person, that's 50 points. And the way their ordinance is set up, it says if you have 100 points, the Alcohol License Review Committee shall call before it for purposes of revocation or suspension hearing all licensees who have accumulated 100 points in a 12-month period as a result of court-imposed convictions. So, I don't know if they really do that, but that's what their ordinance says. I don't know exactly, and I don't know how they deal with this question of, you know, well, if, if it was an employee who was cited, do they, do they impute that violation to the, to the license holder? It looks like they might. So, I'm not sure as a practical matter, and I don't know how often they do compliance checks either in Madison, so. If you went with that kind of a system, then, and if that was your point system, then we'd have, how many? That had two or more in the 12-month period?
Nine, last time.
We'd have nine that are mandatory suspension or revocation proceedings before you if that was your ordinance.
Out of how many establishments that have licenses?
15, I want to say, something like that.
But as a board, I don't think we're, we're not excited about revoking licenses, right?
No.
So, then, if, even if you have the demerit system, so then we have a system with no teeth, because we're, we're sitting here, we don't want to put somebody out of business, because we have to do it for, we have to do the suspension for how many days?
Well, what the statute says is that if you're going to suspend, it has to be for not less than 10 and not more than.
90.
Yeah, 10 to 90 days. Now, I, it seems to me that if you actually had a proceeding like that and you, and you found that someone violated the requirements and was subject to suspension, and if you said to them, well, how about if we suspend you for three days instead of 10, I think they'd probably say okay to that. I don't know why the statute says not less than 10, but that's what it says. I suppose one possibility, it's a thing to think about here, is the way these, the way, there's two ways to start this kind of a process that could lead to suspension or revocation. One is a board-initiated process, non-renewal. So, you have a problematic place and you give them notice, hey, we're going to not renew your license, but you do have a right to come and have a hearing before us, and that, that's one way this can go. The other process, the statute allows any adult resident of the city to file charges, a sworn complaint, setting forth the grounds for suspension or revocation, and then they can prosecute that case in front of the village board. If somebody chose to do that and proved up the case, you would have to decide, A, have they proven the case, and then B, should you suspend or revoke? And if you choose to suspend, the statute says not less than 10 and not more than 90 days. And I doubt that there are any citizens in this village who really are itching to sign that kind of a complaint and do that, but any, any adult resident of the village has that right.
So, Chief, on the violations, there were, there were nine violations from December 13th, four were the second time in 12 months.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'd have four that, if we had that system that was automatic?
Yeah.
Well, and I think you need to also talk about the fact that if you decide that you want to do a demerit point system, you have to think about the big picture, because there's other things that are involved in the system as well, and if you decide to do that, you can say, well, we're not just going to punish them for the underage violations. If there are over-serving issues, if there are fights, if there are things like that in the establishment, then you have some teeth to say, now you have all these other violations, and they've come up to these certain points, now we can go ahead and do those things, instead of waiting until the next year and not renew their license if that's what you want to do. But those are, I just don't want you to think about it just narrowly about the underage serving issue, because if you have a troubled bar in the community, you might want to be able to take some action on that as well, so.
Do we have a troubled bar in the community?
We have a couple that are a challenge, I'll put it that way.
Okay.
Well, and to that point, I actually talked to some of the bartenders in the air, in the community, and the comments I got was that the, it wasn't a big deal, like, they overpour all the time, that's not a big deal, and they drink there after work and nobody seems to care, and, which I was surprised about considering we're having this discussion here as a board of, you know, like, this, we have problems, we need to fix them.
But we would care if we knew about that, so.
Well, I, we care, but I was surprised to hear that from these bartenders, that they didn't feel like their managers were as interested in complying with those things.
I see bartenders drinking on duty all the time, is that legal or not?
It should be a matter of policy that they don't do that, but we can't enforce.
So, there's no state, okay, so it's a policy. I see that happening a lot. People buy the bartender a shot, and I'm like, is that a good idea?
I think it goes to the culture of the, the business, right? Which kind of goes to these other things like overpouring and, and whatnot, where it's, you know, we can't necessarily change the culture of the business, but maybe if we started exploring other options like the demerit point system, we can encourage the business to reevaluate what they're doing, when they become.
Matt, who controls the renewal fee?
The fee?
Yeah, the renewal fee.
The state.
The state controls that.
Yeah.
So, we can't start a fee for places that violate our standards?
So, Chief, when you pull somebody over for DUI or OWI, do you routinely gather the information as to last service?
We try, yep.
Do you find commonality in the community, or is it very evenly spread?
Yeah, there was a study that, I think it was actually in your pack.
Yeah, it's in our pack.
It's called Place a Last Drink.
Yeah.
Yep.
I thought I remembered it.
Yep, so we try to get that information, and then you'll notice on there that there's a couple.
Is that in the email from you?
It's in the email from Mike, I believe.
No, it's the materials that Judge Cox got, that Julia Sherman compiled, she's the Alcohol Policy Project Coordinator in the state.
But you'll notice when you go through there, there are a couple establishments in Oregon that are listed as place of last drink for OWI arrests, so.
Oh, that's right, that's in there, yeah.
That's, it all depends.
And we'll just get two compliance check failures in 12 months, too.
Yeah, it all depends on what the person who's, you know, in trouble, whether they give us that information or not, because we don't necessarily, it's, it's based on volunteer information.
Or if they remember.
Correct.
So, maybe that, you know, maybe that's got, maybe that's got some merit, maybe the demerit point program is a way to try to approach the issue holistically, instead of being a single, instead of being a single issue of underage service, just a general issue of, of disengagement from, from the appropriate way to manage alcohol distribution to consumers. And, and the demerit point system would allow us to try to manage more of that faster, because they wouldn't be separate.
Right. I, I like it personally, I think it does put the businesses on notice, and it also gives them input on how they want the board to react to these violations as well. I mean, like I said, the information that I've found from other agencies, police agencies, is that once this demerit point is put in place, it really puts them on notice, and it kind of seems to curb some of these problems. So, like I said, they're aware of the issues that are, that are presented, they're aware of the demerit point system itself, and they're aware if they get to X number, that their license could be suspended, and they've agreed to that. So, they're going to do, it's in their best interest to make sure that they don't reach that threshold, depending on what's happening in their establishments.
So, it's not something you're doing to them, it's something you're doing with them?
Correct.
Well, I'm not sure of that, I mean, if we adopt a demerit.
That's the way I like to put it, feels better.
Yeah, but if you give them a voice, aren't they participating in it?
They're, they're signing on the, on the agreement that.
This isn't a contract, this, these, the demerit systems are something that you would adopt locally. Now, you could certainly engage them in the process.
Right.
And they, and it seek their input. But it's not, I wouldn't characterize it as something that they're agreeing to unless they all come here.
Wasn't that what Chief just said?
What?
Oh, he said exactly that.
That they're agreeing to it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, it's not contractual in nature.
Well, it's not contractual, but I would think that as them having the voice and being part of this decision-making process, that this would be something that they would be acceptable to, how's that?
What if they don't agree?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Then what? I can, I can see certain businesses in town saying, nope, not doing that.
Again, but the ultimate decision on whether you incorporate it or not is up to you guys.
Right.
And follow through with it.
Yeah.
Well, and to me, the follow-through is the big issue.
Got to follow through.
If, if you're going to establish a point system and the ordinance says, hey, you get this number of points, this is what's going to happen, the first time, then you'll find out, what, you know, the first time you get that, somebody with that number of points, are we ready to do it?
So, I think what that entails is us saying we're, we're going to do it and giving plenty of warning, that we, this is something that we need, feel the need to crack down on, this culture of drinking in, in the state, but I mean, we can only do here. And just letting, letting them know upfront, like, we're looking at this policy, it's going to take effect, it's going to happen over, you know, you're going to, you're on notice, you're all aware that we're cracking down on this, and the consequences are going to be different, and they're going to be serious, and we're going to follow through. And that way, they know. And then, when it happens, I know I would not have a problem following through on that. And if it takes shutting down a local business, which would be horrible, I don't want to do that, but I'd be willing if we gave them notice and we said, look, this is, this is something we need to change and you need to get on board.
So, you would shut down a bar for giving out two?
No, 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 no.
Because under the demerit system, they serve twice.
Well, it depends on what you said.
Right, right.
Yeah, I'm not saying that that would be the demerit system.
Say, I'm not shutting a business down for serving alcohol twice to an underage minor.
No, I'm not suggesting that.
And that's part of what you guys have to decide, how you want to, do you want, how many points do you want it to have before it meets that threshold? If you look at the stuff that the Madison have, each violation, each different type of violation creates some kind of point. So, if you would, if you want to, as a board, say, well, if they get two underage serving violations in a 12-month period, we don't want that to meet the threshold, you don't have to set it that way. But if they do that, and they have fights at the bar, or they do, you know, they're placing, they do over-serving, whatever it might be, there's continual problems there and they meet the threshold that way, I think you'd be more comfortable saying, you know, sorry, we're going to have to suspend your license.
It, it would be very clear, and I am not suggesting two violations, that, that, that would not be a reasonable thing for me, but, but yes, repeat offenders multiple times, different types of violations that count for points.
And, and I think if they were part of the process, they would already understand that as well, so they would be on notice and, and at least those that would want to participate. I don't know who would, how many would or wouldn't, but we could at least give them that opportunity.
Well, we can, we can mandate participation, right, as a village?
Well, I don't know.
In a point system?
Right.
Well, yeah, you could establish a point system and say, this is what we're going to use to decide whether to initiate non-renewal proceedings.
So, if we brought the group together, we just simply said, hey, we're going to have a meeting, we're going to talk about this as an option, we're going to let you have input, I actually don't even have a problem with them setting the number, letting them hold themselves accountable to the number that they think is fair, but at a certain point, I think we're going to have to make a decision. One thing I know for sure is if we keep doing what we've been doing, we're going to keep getting what we're, what we've been getting. And so, we got to do something different. So, even if, how hard would it be for us if we, if we did this demerit as a pilot, how hard would it be for us to exit out of that in three months or, or six months or something?
Well, I mean, you'd be adopting it probably by ordinance, and so you'd just adopt a new ordinance repealing it, if you didn't want to do it anymore. ordinance repealing it if you didn't want to do it anymore.
So even if we piloted it for six months and just see if it makes, if it has an impact, if it doesn't have an impact, there's no reason to put it there.
I guess I'd want to see it for a year.
Or...
We've kind of looked at compliance checks, two or more in a year, and then also get a better record of how the bar is doing over a longer course of time, which I think is important.
And I would look at it holistically, I'd look at it in terms of fights, I'd look at it in terms of police calls, I'd look at it in terms of place of last service, anything else we can think of.
And they, and I'm sure they would have suggestions too as far as how, not only how to wait each incident, but other incidents that maybe we're not aware of or aren't as big on our radar that they see as indicators of future problems.
Yeah, we don't have to reinvent the wheel, there are several agencies that have this already, so.
If Matt could put something together, I'd be interested in taking a look at it as a pilot.
I would, too.
And drive it for a year, and, you know, and see what it changes statistically.
So is that a motion to have the Chief put together a draft of a point system?
I'd like to see the Chief and Matt put together...
You've got a couple copies here already.
I mean, a draft that we could adopt.
Yeah.
And then who implements that, like, what department is in charge of this system? Is it the police, or is it the clerk, or?
Well, so, I think it's kind of multi-departmental, so in the sense that the police is the agency that's going to have the data, they're the ones that are going to either be doing compliance checks or responding to calls and learning about things that are happening that could then become the basis for future action in terms of establishing that, you know, they've hit X number of points. The, my sense is that if you have a point system, if the, you've set it up so that it would be then at renewal time, you know, and every year in, say, February or March, as we're getting closer to renewal time, there probably would need to be some conversation between the police department and the clerk's office about, is there any current license holder in the village who's going to have to apply for renewal? And that, remember that renewal application period starts in like April or May, and then, and then...
It's going on right now.
It's going on right now.
Yeah, everybody renews every year.
And so, what we would have to do is before sending out the renewal applications, we'd have to decide, is there anyone we're going to give notice to that we're going, that we intend to not renew their license based on their failure to comply with our requirements or they're having X number of points, and schedule a hearing. And we need to get that set up so that before June thirtieth, which is the date of the, their license expires...
You've already said it's going to happen in January, February, yeah.
Yeah, so I think it's probably the police department is out there gathering the information and knows what's going on in the community, and then would have to coordinate with the clerk's department at renewal time. To me, that makes the most sense, I suppose there may be other ways to do it, we might say, "Well, wait a minute, instead, let's..." Chief, do you live here in the village?
I do.
Okay, so we could set it up and say, "Chief, once somebody hits that number of points, we want you to file a sworn complaint initiating a revocation or suspension process, schedule a hearing immediately, anytime during the year."
Why do we have to wait till renewal, though? Like, if somebody's getting, couldn't we have, because right now, personnel and public safety does the, the agent, or is it agent renewals, the operator's license, right? When there's a, so why can't we get, whenever that committee meets, get a report of just like people's point numbers? So we're aware ahead of time when people are getting close, and that, so that we can start working with them before, like, I don't want to wait till renewal time and then say, "Oh, well, we have a problem, I want to be ahead of it," so we're working with them before we get to that point. Because the whole point of this, from my perspective, is to help people stay away from getting to that edge of not renewal, right?
Well, you'd have, if you want to build more into the, I'm just talking about bare minimum requirements...
Right.
...to initiate a non-renewal or a revocation proceeding, if you want to go beyond that and say, "Now, let's add to that, let's build into this process," you know, every time somebody gets points, they're notified that they have points, I assume they would know anyway, and we're going to have some other process where we try and work with them. If you want to build that into it, you can, I'm just, I'm just saying bare minimum...
Right.
...the police department and the clerk's office are going to be involved. And then, the other thing you could think about is, who handles these proceedings? Madison has created an alcohol licensing review committee, and it's, they've said, "We're going to create this committee," and they're the ones that are going to have these, conduct these hearings and make these decisions, and right now, in the absence of that, it's this board. So do you want to say, "Well, no, we're going to keep it here," or would you want to say, "No, let's create this other board and let them do it?" That's another thing you could do.
So how would you like to proceed?
So I'd like to see Chief and Matt bring something that would, that would be a template that we could adopt. I'd like to invite the public to come and take a look at it, talk through it with us, and then ultimately, I'd like to set demerits against severity. I don't, I don't think flatlining the demerits is the right way to go, I think there are some things that are small mistakes and some things that are larger mistakes. And then ultimately, I'm in favor of the setting a cap somewhere, but I really don't care where the cap is, I'd like to engage the license holders at this point, let them be a part of this conversation. I don't want to do anything to them, but we have the community to think about as well. Every one of these drunk drivers on the road is somebody's child potentially dead, not to be dramatic, but there's more people in this conversation than just the license holders, I think, is the point I'm trying to make. And then, after that meeting and after deliberation, I'd like us to be able to put it forth for a vote. I don't know that it's going to be unanimous, but I'd like to at least be able to weigh in on that, and I'd like to test drive it for a year and see statistically if we're in a different place a year from now than we are right now, and if we're not, I'd be in favor of revoking that ordinance and going a different direction, because I don't like piling ordinances on top of ordinances that aren't getting us anywhere. That's just me speaking, though, there's Amanda, Jenna, Jeanie, and Jerry.
I was just going to suggest that we talk to the license holders first and see what they come up with to, you know, as far as demerit system, see what their thoughts are on that, see what they would put together, be willing to do themselves, and then open it up to public comment or review and get feedback from the community and tweak it. But I really, I think this is an issue that we should, it's, it's the issue that they need to deal with, and if they can come up with a good plan on their own, that we can just say, "Great," then that'd be, that'd be ideal.
So just procedurally, you reminded me that Jeanie's motion still needs to be voted on, it's still on the floor.
I'm sorry, what was the motion?
The motion, the committee.
That this is regarding operators licenses.
I forgot about...
I thought we were still on discussion regarding that motion that Jeanie made.
Yeah, we are, but...
But it sounds like the motion, you're, it sounds like you're going to make a completely different motion about points.
Yeah, this motion is about licenses for servers, so...
Yeah, I think we have two issues, there's this issue, and then there's the other issue about the demerit.
Yeah.
So we should probably vote on this and then make a different motion.
Yeah, let's jump back to Jeanie's motion, we all have that in our packet, so that's dealt with, with somebody applying for a license to serve. So, any further discussion on that, going back forty-five minutes? Came out of committee with a three to zero vote. Okay, so all in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Abosed? Matt Currie, thank you.
Thank you.
So then, back to the demerits.
And I don't know that I'm making a motion so much as maybe giving staff direction, is that more appropriate?
Well, so, what I've heard is that introduce a point system, I've heard that Matt and the Chief should come up with something, but then Amanda's talking about first, we should invite the public, so just procedurally, what does the board want us to do?
Yeah, I don't have a dog in the fight, if we want to invite the public first and go to the template second, or bring the template so that they have some structure to discuss, and then bring the public in, that's my opinion, but Jenna?
I mean, the Chief's right, there's a, we have numerous examples, I actually think Pittsburgh, when we were looking at this back in 2013, I think Pittsburgh has one, too, that we could, we could just, rather than, no offense, rather than spending legal time preparing something, maybe we could just have some examples, and then invite, would you want to invite all the holders of licenses to a board meeting and have like an open forum, is that what we're talking about, or? We could put some examples on the webpage and say, "Take a look at them, and the board wants to talk to you about these," is that what I'm hearing?
That's what I'm saying, that's what I'm personally saying, but Jenna, maybe you have some different thoughts? You were going to make a comment, and then I said it to you.
Oh, no, okay, I was like, no, I just want to make sure that we're including the license holders in the downtown businesses, or, I mean, all of the businesses, really.
Yep.
In the process, whether we decide to bring a template first to them to make changes to, or whether we invite them in for comment first and then draft.
So we, with those advocates, so let's say we spend legal time and Chief's time, we develop a template, and we get negative reaction from the owners, what would we do then?
My personal vote would be we move forward without them, and we set the bar. I mean, I would like to give them an opportunity to be partners in this process, but at the end of the day, I've got a decision I need to make for the community, and that's how I would vote.
So then, maybe, maybe we should then at least draft something that would be something that the board would be presenting versus using somebody else's example.
Yes.
I'm just trying to figure out what you want, I've heard three or four different opinions.
Yeah, I'd like to see the Chief draft, a draft demerit system, and then involve the license holders who want to be involved and talk about it and get their feedback on it. I think it'd be good to have a starting point.
Okay.
I mean, they have a vested interest in this being pretty light, right? So I think we start at a point that the Chief thinks will work, and he clearly has a fair amount of ideas, I think, and start there, and then invite them for a meet, to a meeting, and be this meeting, or wouldn't have to be a meeting, a village board, it could be something that the Chief calls, we could either, if he wanted to, to listen to it, and he could have discussion with them and see what their input is. Which doesn't mean anything changes at all, and it might. But I just soon see the Chief do a draft to start with, and put us out in front in doing that, and then involve the license holders.
Sounds like a good start to me.
What do you think, Amanda?
Sure.
Mm-hmm, sounds good.
Do template and then invite, okay, got it, thank you.
We want a motion on that?
I, I mean, I just, I just want to make sure we're all in agreement what we're doing, so someone, yeah.
So I should ask the Chief, what do you think of that?
Yeah, I mean, that's fine, I'm just going to go off of the examples that I have already in the packet and the information that I've gotten from the other chiefs that use it, so it's just going to be some version of what you already see in front of you tonight.
Yeah, it just becomes ours, it says Oregon Police Department, Village of Oregon on top, and I think that's a good place to start.
Do you want either the Chief, or me, or somebody at the staff level to fill in point values, or do you want those left blank for you to fill in?
I was saying the Chief would do that. We could talk way too long about it.
But I'd be open negotiating from there, if the license holders had different ideas about the way they'd like to see the points distributed, I'd be open to their thoughts, but at the end of the day, we're going to have to set them, I'm going to have to, I'm going to have to vote on setting them according to what I believe is right.
And I can put the point values in there based on the templates we have, and then you guys can determine what the threshold is, or you guys, what the owners determine, you know, if they reach two hundred points, then this is going to happen.
Can we set fines if they reach so many points? Do we have that authority or not?
Well, so, yeah.
Is the only thing we can do is revoke their license, or can we fine them?
Well, we can't, we can fine, oh, so for example, if a bartender serves an underage person, state law allows us to cite the bartender and require that person to pay a forfeiture, state law prohibits us from citing the holder of the...
But this is going to be our ordinance.
Yeah, state law prohibits us from adopting an ordinance that does that.
Of course it does.
Is there any other ordinances that we can use? I like body house ordinances or anything.
Well, there was the one in the packet, it was talked about in our materials, a nuisance ordinance.
Well, that's...
As somebody mentioned, if a place becomes, beats the definition of nuisance, whatever that is.
So my, in my, what I, what I have seen is that when somebody actually moves forward with, say, trying to revoke a license, here's the one that's used typically. The person keeps or maintains a disorderly or riotous, indecent, or improper house, that's the one that is most commonly used, and that's what the, that's the place where you got the whole range of problems, disorderly conduct, calls, police calls, people getting stabbed, shot, you know, prostitution, you know, whatever, that's the one.
You know, a good example is when you read what happens in the city of Madison, all the meetings they have before they do anything to someone, I mean, they, and they have a lot more serious things than we have here.
Usually they're trying to work with somebody.
Exactly, yeah, I mean, they, I think most communities will work, but try to work with the owner before they revoke a license, that's my experience or opinion.
Because these revocation things, they're no joke, I mean, you're saying to, you're saying to that business owner, "We're putting you out of business." So they've got an investment, and it's a bet the business investment for them, so they're